Hey, Ms. James, Council President, how are you?
Good.
Long time no see.
I know.
Hey, Sir Thomas.
Um...
I like those pictures. Keep them coming.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Is that what it is? What happened?
No, I think we should at least talk about my...
It's not season, I think, but it's gonna be a long time.
Yeah, I think we should put that out there.
It's this letter. I get fined?
Nobody can explain it better than you.
Okay, we're live on YouTube.
It's about...
Just so you know.
I know I turned mine in.
Dave, Mike, can you give you one?
Yeah, I got one. I don't know if Sean got one.
They probably didn't even know about it. How are you doing, all right?
Good. This is what Max is gonna be talking about.
Oh, great. Great.
This is what Max is gonna be talking about.
Yeah. I think so. Okay. All right? As long as we got money.
Yeah.
I want the money.
I know. At least it's something.
We can't do anything.
Yeah.
Okay.
You got it.
Yeah.
Yes, I was. I do it all the time. I'm doing fine, thanks.
So... May I ask if we should talk about this? I think we should, right?
Sure. Yeah. All right, absolutely.
I think it's gonna take a couple of hours to get through.
Yeah, I don't... Yeah.
Right, that's what I mean, yeah.
Relax. This is...
Is it local, or private?
Yes. I didn't understand it so well. I just sent it to Tom.
No, she can't. No, she can't. Don't tell... Mayor, don't tell her that.
She will go. She's gotta stay until December.
Don't tell her that. She can't leave.
A little.
And it's not really worth it, is it?
What I know is the... I'm retired, raising my license, but there's police investigation. It's always really now. We don't have anything on the evidence. Yeah. You know, I can't do it unless the investigation is... Unless it's not true, unless it...
Good, right? Yes. We're good. Oh, where'd they go?
It's here. That's been my recant. Come on, come in and let us know. Let me save you some money. You gotta stop it. I mean, it seems like... Yeah. You've been a president, Council President, just to meet it. Just listen left and right. Yeah, I think I have a choice. Maybe we wanna hear.
Mm-hmm.
Sound bushes. Yeah. Why not tell my time then, I do? Yep. Schedule vacations and everything else around Lakeview, Charlotte. Come on.
We're done.
I was gonna say something about it, but I'll just go for now.
Okay. Everybody's here, right?
This meeting is called to order. Please rise for the flag salute.
The United States of America has the right to govern with one nation, under God, in indivisible, liberate and...
Sorry, I can't make a phone call with your iPad.
Really? Uh, Lucy, stop that.
May I have a roll call, please? Councilmember Bruno? Councilmember Owen?
Here.
Councilmember DePantholous?
Here.
Councilmember McCary? Councilmember McGuigan?
Here.
Councilmember Dill?
Here.
Council President Johnston?
Here. Also present is Mayor Glasser, Administrator Frost, City Clerk Samuelson, City Solicitor Smith, and our City Engineer Snyder. Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided. The agenda for this meeting is posted in City Hall and on the city's website, summerspoint.gov.org. Welcome, everyone. Before we start with our agenda, there's just one change tonight. We have to with... To pull Resolution Number 77-2023, unfortunately. We will start with the introduction of our 2023 municipal budget. And Mr. Leon Costello, our auditor... City Auditor is here to present our budget.
Thank you. If you've been following the news and different articles from different budgets, you know that this year has not been a gray year for most towns. The budget that you have to introduce, and again, it's only the introduction, is gonna have an eight cent tax increase in it. That is probably one of the largest ones you've had in a while, but there are several factors that are contributing to that. I gave you a list of all the things that pretty much equal that number, and it's not many, they're just big. First one is you don't have the donation from the hospital. That's $250,000. That's two and a half cents. Pensions are up almost $200,000, it's another two cents. Health insurance is up $300,000, that's three cents. Believe it or not, your salaries are up $100,000. That's a percent and a half, which is very good, but it's still part of the whole picture. And reserve for uncollected taxes is up $84,000. That's a formula driven by the state. Your percentage of collection is down ever so slightly, so this number went up because as expenses go up, the more you have to reserve for unpaid taxes. So all in all, that's where the eight... Little over eight cents comes from. And tonight is the introduction. Tonight is the start of the budget process. Even though the Budget Committee has been working with this, we've had several meetings and you've grinded out as much as you could grind out of this, and tonight's the introduction. In four weeks, you'll have the public hearing on this. At that time, the public gets to comment on it. We'll field any questions between the budget team and Shayna, Jason, and myself, and go over it. You need four people on the 27th, I think is your next meeting, the 27th, to adopt it. It's not a super majority, it's just a straight majority. And you have your state aid. You got a real small increase in state aid, which is really kind of a joke after all the discussion of what's gonna happen with helping the states out with all these health insurance increases, but nothing happened. So their budget gets adopted on June 30th. We'll be in before the state is, just like all the other towns. You're not alone. Towns that typically have no increase or very small increases have three, four, or five cent increases, as you'll read in the next couple of weeks as more of these pop out. But this is probably the fifth one I've introduced, and three cents to five cents has been the norm so far, except for a couple of towns that have unusual circumstances that could cover these costs. So that's what we have so far. You need a motion to introduce it, at least four votes to pass at introduction. You're self-exam, so it won't go to the state for review. We're responsible for signing off on everything that's being done on this, and you have a resolution later in the year when we do the public hearing to certify and adopt the budget from Shayna's standpoint. She has to sign off that we've got all the requirements. So that's where you stand right now. Again, not the best of pictures, but you're gonna see in many other towns, you'll see the same story. I know one that's gonna match this exactly. I can't say who it is because they need to introduce it before it can go public, but I do know there'll be another one right in the same category. There'd be another one slightly lower than you. But again, towns that typically don't have any increase or all have any increases. So that's where we stand. These items that you have in here, you can't reduce the pensions. In fact, they'll be paid before... On April 1st, they'll be paid by next Friday. Salaries and wages, again, are minimal. The reserve for uncollected taxes is a calculation. The health insurance, the budget's made up of people. If you have a person, you have a health insurance. You don't have the person, you don't have the health insurance, you don't have the pension. So that's where it all comes from. Any questions on what we're introducing? I know the Budget Committee has met several times and been through this extensively.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Costello? No, I don't think so.
Then I'll see you in four weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'll wait for you to introduce it.
Thank you. Okay. Could I have a motion for the introduction of the budget, please?
I'll make that motion. Second.
Any comments? Madam Clerk, may I have a roll call vote, please? Councilmember Owen?
Yes.
Councilmember Bruno?
Yes.
Councilmember McCary?
Yes.
Councilmember DePantholous?
Yes.
Councilmember Dill?
Yes.
Councilmember McGuigan?
Yes.
Council President Johnston?
Yes. The 2023 municipal budget has been introduced. Okay. Moving on to communications. Does anyone have any communications to offer? Hearing none. Mr. Mayor?
Good evening, Council President. I just have a few things. Next Tuesday night, March 28th, the Veterans Advisory Board will be meeting at the AMVET Center to discuss one of the most important things, of course, Memorial Day. So we'll be putting our plans together with that. As I've talked to about in past meetings is that we are working on the memorial, War of 1812 memorial down at the end of New Jersey Avenue at the beach. Last week, I was contacted by the Daughters of the War of 1812, who I didn't know were the ones who were responsible for that memorial and put it together. They, along with the Summers Point Historical Society, are gonna be in with this for a joint venture, hopefully, to get this together. Once the plans are made up by the students out of ACIT, we'll sit down, do a review, and obviously come up with a plan and then have it presented, hopefully, sometime this summer, early fall, before we come back. Also, I know there's been a lot of talk on the... On social media concerning the beach concert contest. I understand USA Today is having a beach concert contest, and we are one of 10 throughout the country. So if you get a chance to get on social media, there is a part where you can vote for Summers Point. Obviously, the most votes you get, you win.
You can vote every day?
You can vote every day. You can vote once a day. So we're looking forward to that. It gets a lot of good publicity for Summers Point, you know, and as we all know, those of us who go down to the beach concerts knows one of the great things about Summers Point during the summer. So Carmen and Nancy and that whole bunch really do a great job with the concerts. So I'm looking forward to this. I'm looking forward to us being number one. Last but not least, I received a letter from Diane Guterres Suchetetti, who was the Commissioner of the Department of Transportation. Dear Mayor Glasser, I'm pleased to inform you that Summers Point will receive an allotment of $500,000 from the Transportation Trust Fund for reconstruction of Exton Road, Ballard Drive, and Colwick Project. These funds are provided through the Local Aid Infrastructural Fund Program. New Jersey Department of Transportation is in the process of fully executing your agreement for this project. Should you have any questions regarding your grant, please contact us. Transportation Trust Fund provides funding to communities throughout our state through grant programs that help local governments advance transportation projects without burdening property taxes. So my best wishes for successful completion of this project. That's some great news. And it goes along with what we've been doing for many years is trying to do the streets in town on a project that was start... Started when Mr. Dill first came on council for his 15-year project and redoing the schools and... Or excuse me, the streets within town and moving along and repairing them. So it's something that we are being helped out through $200,000 to $500,000. So thank you. And that's all I have to report this evening.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Frost? Mr. Smith?
I have nothing either, thank you.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes, good evening. I had a few items to report. As the mayor read the letter, we received a grant for Colwick, Exton, and Ballard Drive. Obviously, if anybody's driven on those roads, those roads are in need of being repaved. You know, receives some complaints about what's taking so long to actually repave them. The reason we are waiting to repave them is we're waiting to find out the status of the grant because if we pave it before then, you can't get reimbursed. So now that we have that, we could go forward with that project. Also, the lighting replacement project along Bay Avenue continues. It's still on schedule to be done by Memorial Day. And the bike path enhancement project, there is a pre-construction meeting on Monday to get that project started, which includes improvements on Ocean Heights for that crossing, where there's been several accidents.
Thank you. Committee reports. The Cannabis Committee has met. Before you give your report, if you wanna have...
The Cannabis Committee did meet again and hasn't changed our recommendation to counsel.
Do you wanna bring Mr. Slusher up first?
Yeah, that'd be great if you would do that.
The Cannabis Committee has asked Max Slusher, who has done some extensive research on this subject, to come up and give us his take and his advice. And the last discussion we had, we had a lot of questions about the financial end for the city. And Mr. Slusher's done, like I said, extensive research, so if he could come up and educate us.
Good evening. My name is Max Slusher. I live at 901 Shore Road, Unit D, Summers Point. Proud resident of Summers Point. Raised in Ocean City. I hold double degrees in local history and economics from Stockton University, hold a master's in economics from the University of Delaware. And God willing, I will be receiving my doctorate from Rowan in May.
Wow.
Congratulations, Doc.
Yeah, great.
Been a long haul. I did a quick analysis... Well, first, let me give you a background on this. I belong to the Economic Advisory Committee. Some of my colleagues are in the back. Great people to work with. I also sit on the planning board here in town. I have no dog in this fight. I was asked to look at some numbers, which I put together using some very basic outline. And I believe... Everybody has a copy?
Everybody has a copy.
Yes. What I'll do is I'll leave a... I'll leave a packet here. Someone's repaying it. I'll leave...
Did you get one, Tom?
I'm sorry. I'll leave a packet here if other people would like to take a look at it.
Okay.
You guys have copies? You got it, okay.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
Yeah. I'm sorry, that's...
I left a package of reports for other people to look at when I'm done here. So just quickly go through the assumptions that I used here. I assumed one retail outlet in Summers Point. That would serve as Summers Point northern upper township. I took the northernmost census tract of upper township and Ocean City. I took those three because outside of potentially Summers Point, I don't see cannabis going into upper township or Ocean City. I'm making the assumption that the outlet, if it is decided upon by this committee, would be able to handle the demand from this area. I'm assuming a full market capture of Summers Point, northern upper township, and Ocean City. I am fully excluding Linwood, Longport, and Margate, though I do believe those communities will remain dry also. But I do believe Eck Harbor Township will be able to capture at least a part of those markets. I'm assuming, of course, year-round residential market and the tourist market, which would be the biggest component, but only the longer overnight stays. I'm excluding daytrippers. I'm excluding one-night stands, stays for people who come down for different events and excluding peak periods such as Memorial Day, Fourth of July, Night in Venice, and Labor Day. I am only capturing the smoking market. This study excludes the edibles and tincture markets, which I have read is the fastest-growing market segment of the cannabis industry. So I'm only looking at the people who smoke right now. So we're basing our consumption off of one out of six adults, which is a number that I got from the Gallup Poll 2022 edition. Question was, in complete confidentiality, do you yourself smoke marijuana? Not if you tried it, do you smoke it? And one out of six adults reported that they do smoke it. Based on that, coming up, if I do the bottom line upfront as we do in the military, we see from the residents of those three communities, total gross sales of about $2.8 million, and from the tourists, about $13 million, which would be almost $16 million in total revenues. At a 2% tax rate, that would be $316,000 annually that would go into the municipal coffers. The way I went about doing this is I looked at population using the 2020 Census in each one of those communities. I eliminated anybody below the age of eighteen... Excuse me. Below the age of 18 or 65 and above. Using that number of the people who are adults, we took one out of every six of them as being consumers of the product. And as an example, you can see at the bottom of page one, the number of consumers. Made the assumption that they spend $100 a month. I've seen different references where it's larger than that, but just assume $100 a month. And that would come up with $2.8 million in retail for that particular market segment. The next one, the more difficult one, was the tourist. So I only went for long-term... Long-term stays. Looked at hotels, motels, B&Bs. And I did the counts myself. I didn't actually make sure the numbers are good, so I probably think I significantly undercounted in that realm. But you can see the numbers right across the top there, and I won't have you glaze over on this. For those hotels, motels, B&Bs, and campgrounds, estimating three people per unit, that comes with a certain number of people with that. Then the seasonal housing, which is significant, not just in Ocean City, but here, where we've had a seasonal housing program that apparently is bearing fruit. So coming down to the bottom here, five people per unit. We come up with the numbers across all three communities for the seasonality. And below, I made the seasonality assumption, which you're very welcome to challenge. I mean, I based it off of literally a gut feeling of what I think the seasonality is. Peak of the summer, 95%. In the winter months, as low as 10% of what would be occupied in those transient beds. So coming up with those numbers, once again, using the community numbers of what... Who would be the target or the population that would be able to consume this? Ocean City, 48% would be between 18 and 65. So I'm using the actual numbers of the year-round residents. And pulling down from that, I come up with a number for the average number of filled beds by month. Added that all up. I'm assuming a turnover of... Every week, there would be a turnover in that population, which for a long-term population, one to two weeks, is generally what it's about. what it's about. Using that with the number of beds, I come up with about $13 million over the course of the full year. So, um, once again, if you go to the front, that would generate, if you did a 2% tax revenue, about $316,000. I, I do want to say, I believe that's a conservative number. I, like I said, I have no dog in the fight, and I definitely didn't want to be wrong if, if anybody decided to move forward in this endeavor. I do have a recommendation. First of all, I'm not an expert in the cannabis industry. All I did this was through research. If you decide to go forward, first of all, disclaimer, there's a lot of assumptions, obviously, based in this, but I have thought of Alton Point a bit. They are conservative, in my opinion. If you were to go forward with it, I highly recommend the community go out for a specialist in this area who knows the law well enough that would be able to construct a bid package so that you're able to squeeze every last dime out of, uh, out of the operation to be able to maximize the value of the return for the municipality. And in this case, quite frankly, and I know, I know this committee, this committee, you're, you're very good with money, very tight with it, and I thank you as a taxpayer for that, that this would be well worth $20,000 to have somebody say, we can do this, we can do this, we can do this, we can do this. Oh, and we'll send this out to, you know, 20 different potential bidders for, for the project and get, obviously, the best, most responsible bid for the municipality if you decide to go that route. So that's one major recommendation I do have for you. Outside of that, pursuant to any of your questions. Okay, so I glazed you over with the numbers.
Madam President?
Yes, go ahead.
Just a few things.
Sure.
And I just didn't keep in mind, I just got this, and it appears you did a rather extensive job, and I thank you for that. Just a couple of questions based on assumption. Right off the top, in this, there's assumption that one out of six.
Adults.
Adults in your, in your age bracket or whatever, 18 to 65.
Right.
Are going to spend, not only smoke, uh, smoke marijuana, but will spend $100.
A month.
A month.
Yes.
In our.
Yes.
Retail place.
Correct.
Retail spot. Okay. So that, and you're, you're comfortable with that assumption?
Yes. Yeah, I, I am from whatever, as I've seen from the average.
Yeah, I mean, that's just, I, I don't, I'm maybe naive. That's surprising to me. It seems.
Stuff isn't cheap, from the research I've done. I mean, even a small bag of edibles is like $30. I mean.
But that many people are engaging in it, just, you know, maybe I'm naive.
I, I did, I took Gallup Poll information. It was completely confidential. I mean, whether it is or is not is, it's worth a debate. Yes, sir.
Right. The other, the other part of that is that there's still a black market out there.
Yes.
So if one of six are, how many are we losing to the black market? And is that considered in your?
That, that, no, no, that is not considered. That's a good point. But I'd also like to point out, the black market with their putting in, in the marijuana today could kill you. Yeah, one thing about having where it's legalized.
I want to stop you right there. I'm not advocating to anyone to go to the black market.
Right.
I'm not advocating marijuana at all, but, yeah, you make a good point. But even with that danger, people are, have a relationship with their marijuana dealer for 20 years, may not drift away from. But I, I, you know, I can't debate that. I have no facts, so.
No, yeah, these are good points. I, Sean, I agree with you.
I just wonder. The, the other thing that, uh, that, that I would be interested in is, and, and, you know, you've come up to a number, what we could achieve perhaps in, in tax revenue. What is, if any, now, the effect on existing businesses? Now, obviously, some, some people have a, you know, a poor opinion or a poor connotation of a marijuana shop. What would it do to any other businesses? And then can that be defined?
That is a good point. I mean, obviously, you'd want to put it somewhere where it wouldn't have that type of impact.
Right.
Even, even from people's just negative perspective without it being so.
Right.
Uh, no, I, obviously, I didn't look at that. And that is a good point, but I believe that there are sites that could be considered in Summers Point where that impact would be minimized.
Sure.
They, they, there are several medical marijuana dispensaries that people don't even realize are there anymore, quite frankly.
Yeah.
And not to minimize it. I mean, it's valid point.
The, the other thing, you keep mentioning a bid package and so forth, and maybe I don't understand the process here. The city is he going to allow, you know, not allow, right? Do, are we giving out licenses or what, what, what are we bidding out?
What I would recommend, and that's why you need to find somebody who really knows what they're doing.
Yeah.
If you're going to do this, I wouldn't just give out a license. I would have people bid for it. I mean, you have, quite frankly, a location that it's probably one of the most lucrative in New Jersey.
So what you're saying is that we have control of a license? We have, similar to, you know, hate to mention it, but liquor licenses.
Yes.
But it, it, the state has some sort of agency that is overseeing marijuana licenses?
And that's.
Similar to the ABC?
Yes, sir. And that's why you got to get some.
The state gets the licensing, but in the initial bid, the state gets that money.
Okay.
That's my, that's my understanding. Don't go over the, but, but the re-licensing, and it's based upon size and square footage, there's actually a micro business, which is a 2,500 square foot business or less, 10 employees or less. The recommendation is a $1,000 annual, like sort of like mercantile.
Yeah.
So it would be $1,000 for that type of retail shop. And we can limit it to that if that's what we choose to do, or you can go, because I understand there's a place that's very large, it's called the Botnist, the EHD. And so that, that type of facility, you can charge up to $10,000.
That's 30,000 square foot facility.
It's also a grow facility, too.
Yeah, it's a grow center.
Sorry.
It's also a grow facility, I believe.
Yeah.
I, I don't know. I remember this.
Yeah.
The legislation's 240 pages.
I know, it's extensive. Like I said, I, I fully admit, I am not an expert in this. I, I'm, I'm a numbers cruncher.
I'll, I'll be the first to be either way. I would go through it, and we've been over and just like pulled everything.
Yeah. So I have.
I think the licensing, initial licensing, but that's not a bad idea, the bid process, because there's got to be something that is important, Tom Smith or anyone else sitting in this room.
Well, I, I mean, what I would tell you is leave nothing on the table. I mean, and, and.
Right.
And performance requirements, obviously, the state's got enough to do the same, you know, absolutely.
What has to be there is what's required by the state in any of these operations. And that's what takes up the bulk of the 240 pages of this legislation.
Right.
And just one other question, and I doubt, I don't think you'll be able to answer this, but i- if we have a facility that does 15.8 million and not having a handle on how that revenue's derived or how, how you make that, how many nickel bags you have to sell, I mean, what size?
Nickel bag.
Facility. What size facility is, is required for that?
I, you know, you know, and that is actually an outstanding question.
Yeah.
One of my assumptions is, is that you have a facility that can handle this type of traffic, so.
Yeah, and, and, and along that lines is, well, we already have those. I'll have to take a quicker, a deeper look into this, but how long is the line and how, actually, how big is that?
Not just based on this, but because, as you know, there's been a lot of manufacturer growers and dispensaries that have been coming in here.
Yeah.
And I actually started visiting, probably from Trenton all the way down as, as far as I could, some of these places. Now, it's, it's still young and it's still limited access.
Yeah.
The friggin' lines in some of these places are incredible.
Yeah.
I mean, just absolutely incredible.
Yeah.
I mean, there's, there's one up near Del Ran that I, I mean, and it's just, it seems like it never stops. The Botnist itself, on a weekend, the cars are sometimes all the way down.
Yeah.
I, I, and I'm not, you know, I'm just, I'm just saying that.
Sure.
It's probably the limited access, but wow.
Yeah. Again, I appreciate.
I have a question.
Thank you.
Sure.
Go ahead.
Is there any data around, what are these stories put up?
Any data on crime statistics around these facilities?
I.
Hold on, Joe. Yeah. Any data on?
I have not seen anything. Um, you know, you, you would probably have better contacts at me. I would call these communities up, but.
Right.
Eck Harbor Township, probably not. I mean, they're an industrial park. You'd have to, but, I mean, it's a good question. The one up in Del Ran, it'd be very, or not Del Ran, it's what the community is near Del Ran, to get, you know, a call. I've been there three times because my father-in-law's in a facility up there, long-term care. So we go up and says, drive by and take a look. I've never seen anything inappropriate, but I've only been there three times.
Right.
I'm sure something has happened somewhere.
Sure.
It has to be, you know? And so I, but that's something probably, people have contacts here in their, in their prior, prior jobs, or maybe they could put a phone call into the chief of police and ask him how it's working out.
Well, some of the ordinances that I've read, they've required them to have their own security.
Yes.
So, yeah.
Yeah.
On site, whenever they're open, they have security on site.
Now, what they do is you walk in and they, they scan your, they scan your driver's license. Okay? So that goes into like a state database. So it's, you know, the, the privacy is gone, you're, if you're doing this, you're, and then you go through and they, it's, you can order, you can order while you're there, and then you got to pick it up while you're there. And you're standing in line, and there's security people around.
Mm-hmm.
So, and they'll tell you, I mean, you get too close to something, they'll want you too close to, they'll tell you, you need to back away. Then they have requirements for the medical marijuana.
And that was my question about, so this doesn't reflect the medical mari-
Well, I want to tell you what, because I took this at one out of six, I'm assuming it's probably, that number's probably in that one out of six number.
Okay.
So I, yeah, I see what you're saying. Did I not count them? I'm making the assumption I did because I'm pulling it out of that Gallup number.
But again, this is just for smoking, not, not the other medicinal things that they sell?
Right. I am, from what I've read, apparently, the edibles and the tinctures are the fastest-growing part of the cannabis market.
Okay.
So, and, and one thing I would say is that, I mean, I would hope that this town would treat the consumption of, of marijuana out in public just as strictly as they treat alcohol.
Right.
I mean, this, we live here. We, we've got to maintain a sense of decorum, so, I, I mean, if, if, if you decide to go that far.
Okay. Any other questions?
That has to be acted upon, whether or not.
Mm-hmm.
It's here. It's here, whether we, whether we sell it or not, it's here.
Whether we sell it.
Right.
You could just take a walk in certain places, town, where they take a walk. So when we do smoke.
So you, you can, you can smell it around town? I mean, I'm not trying to be naive here.
No, it's here.
Okay. I mean, I, I really.
And you, yeah, yeah.
It smells like scum to me, so it catches my attention immediately, so, you know, but I mean, it's just, I, I'll tell you something. Summers Point has got a very efficient police department. They are good, okay? I, you know, maybe, maybe you need to put on another officer, and maybe that could be built into the contract. I don't know. I, I, I'm just, you know, spitballing here. But I mean, obviously, there are spillovers that we need to consider if we went that far.
Any other questions for Mr. Slusher? No? No?
Don't envy you guys.
Okay. Thank you for taking the time and doing this. Thank you.
No problem. Thanks, Max. Appreciate it. Thank you. You know what? We are working with the, the Economic Development Committee. They're very proactive, and they asked me to take a look at this like a year and a half ago. What I did is I went back and took another look at it. So I probably worked a couple days on it, but I have reviewed it another two or three days since then, when Janice said, would you be interested in coming in and giving a third-party view? So, and it, it's really, well, it, it, it really isn't that bad. Trust me, as far as impact studies go, this is, is pretty light. It's impact light, so, okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. DePanfleas, you want to?
So the recommendation stays the same, that we move forward looking into this, starting with at least one and keeping it on our commercial corridor of Route 9 and away from the school. And also, I'll add to that, that we take into account Mr. Slusher's recommendation about hiring a professional to look at it for us.
We'll just do a.
Well, I think what we should do, is, is, I need to be a little more involved with the, it's.
Right.
Do council, I hope you, the director being Mr. DePanfleas, and then.
And Mr. McCary.
Mr. McCary.
Right.
We want to get together, we sit down, just go through a bullet, what we've got, where we're going to look at, what we wanted to.
Sure.
Because, because pretty much, we get to run the show. There's some.
Right.
There's limitations on the, the operation itself, but as far as, there was a lot of talk about the schools, which led me to go back and take a look at the, the legislation again. And there's really nothing that bars the operation within the school, except for you can advertise within 200 foot, 200 feet of a, a school. So that means, yeah, put a sign out, that would be technically an advertisement. So that's really the only prohibition is, is.
But we can put our own on it, right?
Well, we can make it 1,000 feet.
Right.
We can make it, can't make it 2 miles for that.
They'd be, right. Okay.
A little bit.
So I think the, the question for tonight is, is everyone okay with us moving forward with researching this? Mr. Smith doing his homework, the committee researching it further as far as the procedures and what we can and can't do, and?
I think we need to take advantage of the sorely needed.
Yes.
Revenue that might exist out there.
Okay. Mr. Dill?
I'm, uh, I'm still, still sort of on the fence, based on the fact that the, the revenue could be taken away from us at any time by the state. I made those statements before. I would, I would think that it would be worth us, at least at a minimum, having the committee and Mr. Smith continue to go forward with this. Do we get to the point where we have to make that hard decision? And then we can make that hard decision based on more facts than, even though Mr. Slusher gave us a fantastic report, I think we need to narrow it down to the point where we're making an objective opinion. And the only way we can do that is to move forward with the recommendation of the committee.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. McGlynn?
Uh, thank you. Um, yeah, you know, again, I mean, like I said, I've just seen his report for the last few minutes, and I, and I am intrigued, and again, a very detailed report that I'd really like to study. But, um, you know, a couple of things that have been said is that, and he suggested it, you know, maybe we put another person on that just handles marijuana issues. And if that's a police officer, I mean, that's going to cost us, you know, let's just talk round fingers, $100,000. So, I mean, that, that cuts a third of what the tax revenue we're looking at. And I also would like to see the, you know, some sort of impact study on the rest of the, you know, some sort of impact study on the rest of the businesses and exactly where this is going to go. I'm not sure, more of a procedural question is, just hypothetically, if we come to the recommendation and it's, the will is here of council, what are we, what is our... I don't quite understand what our next step is. Are we changing our code to allow it, and then somehow getting a license to sell, or, I'm not, I'm not sure? And are we, are we, you know, getting, are we going to decide one license, two licenses?
I think these are all the, these are all the questions we have to get.
Yeah, that, I, you know, it's hard for me to say yes.
Yeah.
But we have that kind of, kind of standing...
A lot of the light to allow it.
Yeah.
And, and technically, we have to go out with a bid, we have to send, and something to the state, because I understand that such forth, that, that we are doing, we're entering into a team with X, Y, Z company.
Yeah.
We can add as many as we want.
Okay.
We can add the size, we can limit it to a micro-business. If we're like bulk in retail, is my understanding.
Right.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
So, we can, we want to, say, we want a 30,000 square foot front place, mightn't it?
That was, that's a gross center, too, though. Yeah, we don't have that. Well...
You have, you can add something like the size of a Super Wala, I guess, or something there. I don't know, I mean, how big one of those is, but it, it, you, we can essentially do a lot of the things we want to do. To, to get this through, it appears to me that they pacified the municipalities in the state by saying, "Look, essentially, you're in charge." So, so, you know, so everyone says, "Well, look, if we want to have it, we don't want it." The only, the only prohibition against the municipality taking any action is we can't, we can't limit delivery into our town.
Sure.
So...
All right. Well, that, that, all that being said, and, you know, I've been somewhat on the hard no side. I'm a little softer after reading this, you know, I'm not quite there yet, but I think it's worth the further exploration. And you mentioned growing facilities. You know, quite frankly, I'd rather have a growing facility than a retail facility, but I don't think we have the facilities or location for that.
We can look into that, too.
Yeah.
Mr. Allen?
Um, I think that Max Slusher, you did a fine job on, on your report. However, it didn't bring up the fact that, like, in other communities like Lang City, with, with accidents and first responders getting called out for people who were pretty much, you know, intoxicated from marijuana, you want to call it cannabis, but, and also, the 70% residents of New Jersey voted for it, but did 70% of Somers Point residents vote for it? That's a good question.
Yes.
But I'm all up for new discovery. I really am.
Great.
And I want to know what the, you know, the, want to hear from the, the teachers' association has to say, and a lot of others besides our first responders and people here in town. And, yeah, I'm definitely up for listening and see what we come up with.
Thank you. Councilmember Bruno?
I'm not going to let it be received, and, and I, I was looking forward to the, the medical aspect of, you know, medical town, and to see how doctors are feeling, and what ways they would be using.
Okay, thank you. Mr. McCary?
Yeah, just so we, we can balance the cause and effect, you know, if we have this product, we could be able to use. I'm not worried about the security around the building, which we, we're sure, because we, we all recognize there is a security, and more concerns. Is this going to create a, an issue for the police in other power areas of the city? And does that require then hiring another policeman? That costs us so much money, and then how is that all balanced out financially? So, it would be interesting to know a little bit more in terms of what other cities have experienced, and how they've dealt with that. But I think we have to take the next step and analyze it. It's, it's okay that we have to do, and, and we'll do it.
Okay, thank you. I also agree that I think we need to look into this, and I feel like some of the concerns that are mentioned are going to be here whether we sell it here or not, because it is here. It can be delivered here. People bring it into town. As far as that side of it, I think we're going to have to deal with that regardless. So, but I would like to look further into it, and I think we could, if there's any way we can benefit from this financially, we certainly need it. So, so, okay. Well, the committee will move forward. Thank you. Any other committee reports to offer? Okay, hearing none.
Council president?
Yes.
I, I guess it could be a committee report, but I just want to speak on the grant that we just received for the $500,000. First of all, I'd like to thank our engineer. He played an integral role in obtaining that, that grant for us, and as well as Mr. Otella, who's our grant writer and the steering committee. This isn't, these grants just don't appear, okay? There's a lot of work associated with it. There's a lot of discussion prior to that. Just happen to look over, our business administrator also plays a role, sorry about forgetting you. But, you know, a lot of work goes into these grants, and I just want to recognize the people that are behind the engineering and the paperwork that's associated with these grants. Like I said, they just don't appear. They come through hard work of the administration and our engineering and grant writer. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Could I have a motion to approve the minutes from the March 9, 2023 meeting, please?
Sub moved.
Could I have a second?
I'll second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved. Moving on to resolutions. I have a motion to open up for public comment for resolutions only.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now open for public comment on resolutions only. If you wish to speak, please step forward, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, council, council mayor, council president, rest of the governing body. My name is Alex Barrera. I'm an attorney. I have offices in Limwood, and I'm here to speak on now-withdrawn Resolution 77 of 2023. I represent the applicant of a liquor license, MPF 741 LLC. The sole member of that LLC is Michael Fitzgerald. Now, I'm not here to complain, all right, and I'm certainly not here to speak badly about anybody, because I have nothing but the utmost respect for the governing body, for the people of the city who work, and the police department. But I, I do need to protect my client and make clear a few things, and that's why I'm here, and I just want to kind of go through a few things. Number one, my client is under agreement to acquire the Anchorage. I think that's a well-known secret at this point. It's in the public domain. We started the application process 129 days ago. I want to make crystal clear to the governing body and to the rest of the public that the applicant has been nothing but fully diligent, responsive, and transparent. Now, the process is for an investigation to be done, and the police department has done that. My client is clean. He is qualified. In New Jersey, with municipal licenses, it's the ultimate home rule. The city controls the city licenses. They control the transfer process. They control the investigation. They have the sole discretion to grant licenses and approve the transfers, all without the ABC having to approve or bless anything. When the transfer process is complete, the file is packaged up and sent to the ABC, and every once in a while, I'll get a phone call, "Hey, you didn't answer this one, you left it blank. Would you mind filling it in and sending it back?" My understanding is, with investigations here in Somers Point, traditionally, the police department, whoever is assigned, when they are finished and ready to send it to council, they like to get a second look. Now, there was a investigator who served, a field investigator, who served a long time, and he would go town to town. He would meet with people. If there were questions, he would answer them, on a very conversational, informal basis, not in Trenton, but here in the back offices. Unfortunately, he retired. His replacement is new. He's been there for a year. He doesn't know what he's doing. He acknowledges that. So, intentionally or not, getting a second look these days means that the file gets sent to the ABC in Trenton. I have no doubt that the city government works much faster than any governmental office in Trenton. But that's where we are right now.
Mr. Barrera, I respectfully have to, we have a three-minute rule for our public comments.
If I just may just conclude quickly.
Yes, please.
I want to make clear, my client's ready, willing, and able to take over operations immediately. The money is sitting in escrow, ready to be dispersed to the seller. He's ready. He's totally ready to go, and I can tell you, I've spoken to the council, to the director, all right, and she made crystal clear to me, this isn't my process, because I asked her, "When am I going to hear from the ABC?" You're not going to hear from me at all, Mr. Barrera. I don't deal with you. I deal with the city. I've called and called and called and tried to get things done, but right now, it's with the ABC. And I can tell you this, I spoke to the chief of staff, we're a local politician, who I'm now going to have to get the help, move this along. I'm told the same exact thing recently happened, and it was with the ABC for 18 months.
This isn't really...
I understand.
The council's...
I understand.
Until the, until it's turned over. Our mayor is the liaison with the police department, and he can cer- he will certainly...
I wasn't aware of anything that was going on. Of course, we know that there's been a transfer. In the wind, for how long? Brad and I agree with you on that, Mr. Barrera, but the bottom line, I didn't find out that any discussions, et cetera, were going through last, till last night, so I'm not really versed on this. The bottom line is, we understand, and I don't want to misspeak for this council, but we understand your feelings. We understand you want to move on. The, the Anchorage is a mainstay of our town. We all love it, but the bottom line is, you know, I will not, as a mayor, interfere with a police investigation. I've made that clear, and again, I come from law enforcement. So, with that being said, we hear you.
Thank you.
And I'm sure that the parties who are involved with this will do their due diligence and move this along as best as we can.
Thank you, Mayor.
And council, we will also do whatever we can. When this is ready to go, we will certainly get it done, so...
And I, and I appreciate that, and I certainly am not asking any kind of interference with a police investigation. But I do want to make sure that the public's aware that, you know, rumors spread, you know? Next thing you know, oh, this guy, he has no money, he's a loser, you know? We're ready. We're ready. And my client's a really good guy. He's got to do a great job.
Anybody willing to invest that much money in Somers Point is going to be welcomed here.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Obviously not a loser, so...
Right.
And we haven't, and we have not heard...
I'll sing that from the mountaintop, so everyone in the public knows that.
And, and that has not been in any of the discussions at all.
I understand. I appreciate your time. Sorry I went over. I, I, again, I just wanted to make sure, you know, I, I just want to make sure there's no kind of rumors and stuff like that.
No.
And I'm here. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
We'll do everything we can.
I'll put a disclaimer on the record.
Sure.
I'm not involved in the liquor license aspect of this at all.
Right.
This really, and I believe I talked to council members about this. The police department calls into the purview of the, the, the mayor and council, so his request is just to look at anything, the request...
Goes to the mayor.
...to take a look at it, so.
And that will be passed on.
And, and just to be clear, everyone involved in this, the police department included, has been nothing but respectful. I want to make that crystal clear. They're doing their job. I just happen to think they're done, but I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
Yes, good evening. John Helbig, 106 East Dawes Avenue. I just had a couple of questions on Resolution 76, 2023. That's the solar project at the old wastewater treatment plant.
Yes.
I just had a question or two. Is that a, the city's going to continue to own the property? This is a lease agreement, like a long-term?
Yes.
Is it a life cycle thing? Does it, like, 20 years? Is this...
Yeah, exactly, yeah. So, basically, as it expires, we have the option to keep it. They can dismantle it, take it off the property. Basically, you give it to the life of the system.
Right.
And then we make a decision at the end, have it work or not.
So, they, do they cap our electric fee? Like, what's the advantage to the city there other than they're capping our, the, the electric charge for that pump station?
Yeah, exactly. So, the, the advantage is to get a reduced electricity...
Electricity rate?
Yeah.
I see. Okay. All right. Well, I, I just want to say, you know, I applaud council for taking that step. I think we should look at other facilities in the city to see if they're applicable for this type of thing. We have the assets. If we can utilize those assets to a greater degree for energy sufficiency and, and save money in the long term, I think it's a good idea. Thank you.
That is one of the things to do.
It's been...
And that will tie into sustainable jersey, so we can talk about that offline.
Great.
Thank you. Motion to close?
Motion to close the public portion on the resolutions.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now closed for public comment. Resolution number 74.
Resolution number 74 of 2023, resolution authorizing the cancellation and/or refund of taxes under the Disabled Veterans Act, NJSA 54:4-3.30 et cetera, 1948, Chapter 259 is amended for Block 1929, Lot 11, in the amount of $690.12 to be canceled and refunded, and $1,724.93 to be canceled for 2022. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 74 is adopted. Number 75. Resolution number 75
of 2023, resolution setting fees for property inspections required pursuant to Chapter 169, littering and property maintenance of the city code.
May I have a motion, please?
Sub moved.
Make that motion.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 75 is adopted. Number 76.
Resolution number 76 of 2023, First Amendment Solar Contract Installation and Operation of Ground-Mounted Solar Photovoltaic Energy System pursuant to a Solar Power Purchase Agreement.
May I have a motion, please?
Sub moved.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 76 is adopted. Number 78. Resolution number 78
of 2023, a resolution of support, Atlanta County Local Efficiency Achievement Program, LEAP Challenge Grant Fire and EMS Dispatch Services.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 78 is adopted. Number 79.
Resolution number 79 of 2023, authorizing the Stormwater Assistant Grant Application funded by the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection.
May I have a motion, please?
Sub moved.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 79 is adopted. Resolution number 80.
Resolution number 80 of 2023, promotion of Stephen M. Horne.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll gladly make that motion.
Second.
Any comments?
I'll make a comment. He's one of the best employees we've got here. So, it, it comes down, I mean, we have a lot of great employees, but Stephen's just done a fabulous job, and not just because he's sitting in the back. He's always sitting in the back, you know? But he's always here, you know, but he started his career here with the city, and he's moved on, and he does a fabulous job, and I think he's wanted, going to be...
And I think he's wanted, going to be, looking forward to better, bigger and better things within the city.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 80 is adopted. Congratulations. Yes. Okay. Resolution number 81.
Resolution number 81 of 2023, approving proposals, goods and services, 2023.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 81 is adopted. Moving on to old business. Anyone have any old business to discuss? New business. We need approval for a social affair permit for cornhole crease for April 7 from 4:00 p.m. to 11:34 p.m.? And April 8 from 12:00 p.m. to 11:34 p.m. I assume all of their paperwork is in order?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Everyone okay with that? Yes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Discussion of the bill. Oh, anyone else have any new business? Any other new business? No. Discussion of the bills, Mr. Frost?
Sure. So this evening, we have a bill listing the amount of $2,435,026, as well as an additional bill listing the amount of $74,260.30.
Okay. May I have a motion to open for public comment?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now open for public comment. If you wish to speak, please step forward, state your name and address for the record.
Motion to close the public portion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are now closed for public comment. Could I have a motion to pay the bills, please?
Sub moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Frost can pay the bills. Any further comments from the governing body? Hearing none. Could I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll gladly make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, everyone.
Oh, my God.
Don't get used to it.